5th of October at 6:00 PM. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, next discussion on a proposed amendment for fiscal year 2022's capital budget and fiscal year 22 to 2026 capital improvement plan to increase the capital project for fencing around the generator at the Department of Corrections by using overage from the emergency services roofing capital project, Ms. Olam.
It's actually overage from the corrections facility roofing project.
I read that wrong, thank you.
Well, it actually does say emergency services, but it is, the project was corrections. Emergency Services is housed in the corrections building and it is a capital project in the capital budget. It is not in our operating budget and so we're asking to use leftover Pago money to reallocate in this fiscal year to do the fencing around the generator that is located on the corrections property. The, the height of the fence needs to be higher than what was originally spec'd and so it is going to be our responsibility to put that fencing up.
What, what is wrong with the height of the fence? Is it cosmetic or?
It is, it doesn't meet the requirements around the, the rest of the correctional facility.
So there is a requirement for it to be a certain height?
We're, we're intending to keep all of them the same height around the correctional facility to keep the, the perimeter, the same, the security the same.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Harley?
Can I raise, it, it came up during, during this, Laura and I were talking about this, whether you can transfer in a capital budget. And I didn't understand where, where is the money coming from on the roofing project? Was that bonded project?
No, it is, it is Pago, it is money that was Pago money transferred out of, and I, I don't remember what fiscal year, I apologize, but it was transferred out of the operating budget with a Pago, when Pago projects were set up and put into the capital fund. So there's the general fund and then there's the capital fund. This was moved into the capital fund. So the capital fund doesn't have departments, the capital fund is the capital budget. And so the prohibition of moving money between departments, this isn't with, between departments, it's staying within the capital budget, it's not moving out of the capital budget, it is moving projects. And we reallocate money, we did this last year, we reallocated money from one capital project, we decided we weren't doing that or we had excess money and we reallocated that money. This just happens to be money left over from a prior fiscal year versus reallocating money from a current fiscal year project.
The Pago funding, if I'm correct, is usually from, something that's been approved from reserves.
Correct.
To answer your question, it's not bonded.
And I think that actually answers the question. If it was, if it was bonded money, you wouldn't.
It's, it's not bonded money, we checked, the, the original source of the funding was Pago. If it was bonded money, we have a whole different, I wouldn't be coming forward with this.
Okay, I think, I think we're good.
So is a public hearing still necessary?
Yes.
Okay, that public hearing can be held September 21st. Does everybody approve with moving on to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see any objections.
It's, the 21st is the next meeting, it's only one, it's only one reading and it's only one week for advertising, right? So that's the earliest and so that actually accomplishes the goal of getting it done as soon as possible.
That work?
Yes.
Okay, so that's when we'll have it, the next meeting on the 21st at 10:00 AM.
I will tell you, Charles Schmeckel may be, my deputy director may be the one here in my place at the next meeting, I may not be available.
That's fine. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Ms. Olam. Well, I guess you're next on the American Rescue Plan, the interim report, you, Mr. Basota.
So council requested to see the interim report, we've provided you the interim report. I will say, the federal government is changing their requirements, even after we submitted this report, they changed their requirements. Basically, what they've told us since that change is that especially the numbers associated with lost revenue, they're viewing the number that you put on here as a preliminary number and you're allowed to change it. So our understanding of the reports, and after this one, we will be reporting on a quarterly basis, our understanding of the reports is we're supposed to show them anything that we have obligated and/or spent. As of July 31st, we had not spent anything, but we had obligated some funds based on the money that we had approved in the budget to spend, primarily within the tourism, the tourism requirement to help fund tourism. We, we have signed some, had some purchase orders for some equipment for the tourism department and that's the $100,000 number that you're seeing on the, on the schedules. Otherwise, we will continue to file the reports on a timely basis and we are taking, we are continuing to get guidance from the government. The government originally told us that the final guidance would be issued in June, it's now September, they're, they have not yet issued the final guidance, it's still interim guidance. And so, any questions that I can attempt to answer?
Does that guy have any questions for Ms. Olam?
I just had a quick question. When President Dodd and I were at the NICO conference, other counties had shared that they, they did quite a bit of community outreach to get input on how these funds should be spent. I was wondering if we're planning on doing anything like that?
At this point in time, we have not put that in place, that is, we have just, I have had a meeting with Erica.
Joseph.
Joseph, yes, and talked with her. So we are, I will say, we're at the point of work, we're trying to be as conservative as possible because, as I said, we filed a report on the 27th and on the 30th, they told us, oh, by the way, you know, like, here's some additional information. So because the guidance is constantly changing, we are, we are being conservative in our approach to this, these funds.
To, to echo that, yes, we're being extremely cautious on the use of the American Rescue Plan money. Again, as a reminder, it's two tranches for a total of 20 million, just over $20 million, 10 years this year, 10 million next year. To Councilman Hastings' point, we are still in a pandemic because the emergency was released in July. We are still incurring costs and the intent of the American Rescue Plan is to mitigate the cost of lost revenue for, caused to, due to COVID. In addition, our guidance continues to evolve on how we can spend it. Yes, we're aware of other counties that are using it for other uses. We want to make sure that we do it correctly. There is also an auditing that's going to come down the road, we want to make sure that we're good for that. The, the funds need to be obligated by December of 2024 and spent by December of 2026, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
So, so as we continue to experience revenue loss due to COVID and, and everything involved therein, we want to make sure that we're planning for the future and, and use this as physically responsible as possible.
And what were the changes you were thinking about that you mentioned earlier?
Well, again, the changes, it's, it's really, we have not, we didn't even put the full $10 million in our budget, so it is going to change, but the thing is, is the guidance that we're getting is changing still. And so to not send out the money quickly allows us to digest all the guidance that we're getting. I understand that there are a lot of people who want this money to go out the door and go out the door fast, but my concern is that, you know, again, the reporting is a perfect example, they changed the guidance on us the day the guy, the day the report was due. Well, we'd already filed our report. Luckily, I don't feel that we filed anything in error, but it does lead me to believe that we should be, take measured steps in how we spend this.
Okay, any more questions or comments?
I'm just looking on the Wycomico County Board of Education's website and they have, they have here the American Rescue Plan, application, review and feedback. So you can actually look at what their plan is and there's a, a place where you could leave comments, or citizens can leave comments. I just thought that was a, that was an interesting way to get public input on how the money's spent.
Look into that.
Yeah, there's a.
Ms. Cannon?
There's, there's about 60 different blind items here, but we've only, appearing to have only addressed three, which I, I really thought there would be a lot more in here.
Because we only obligated, again, we obligated money in our budget, we obligated about $4 million. Let me rephrase that, we haven't obligated it, we budgeted potentially for it. The only amounts that we have obligated are things that we have purchase orders on. And so we have, the guidance that we had when we filed was what revenue had we lost as of July 31st that we were planning to apply to this? That's the one number that we've put in here and then the other number is the tourism number. Again, we, we aren't hitting, we are not planning to hit all 60 categories. That would mean that, you know, the funding would not go very far in each of the categories. We're trying to find, find the categories that make the most fiscal sense for us as a county and that have the impact that we feel is appropriate and make sure we're following the guidance.
You think some of the areas, I mean, provision of government services 90, about $95,000, was that specifically?
So that's, that's, we budgeted that we were going, we were losing money in traders' licenses. The fact that our revenue cap meant that our revenue could only go up by 1.4% because the pandemic actually impacted the, the cost of living adjustment. We have lost revenue related to the inmates because we can't send them out on the work crews that we have sent, that we have previously done. We have lower admissions and amusement tax and we have lost interest income because the economy has kept the interest rate really, really low. So those five things were estimated to be in our budget and we said, okay, we, those are pretty much prorated across the year, so that added up to over a million dollars and basically not, one twelfth of that is the $94,000.
Working under the, under the idea of goals, with all that, with the entire list that is there, what would you say are your next two or three goals that you think would be most beneficial to begin with?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
That's the highest priority, is the next item on the agenda.
So if there's no other questions, we'll move on to that.
That's a good segue.
Ms. Olam?
I'm turning it over.
Thank you very much for bringing us back to a work session so we can clarify some items regarding this request on the proposed resolution. Nationwide, there are currently systemic critical staffing challenges in public safety areas of corrections and 911 specialists in the depart, in the Department of Emergency Services and communication specialists in the sheriff's office. There are two major time-critical issues involving the public safety sector and they are recruitment and retention. In the Department of Corrections, there are currently 27 open positions. Corrections requires 24, 24-hour shift coverage every day of the year. Staffing issues compromise public employee, law enforcement and inmate safety. In addition to significant overtime costs, correctional department costs to the taxpayer include liability, academy training and ongoing training expenses. As a regional hub, we have more inmates than other detention centers in our, in our area. Inmate population has become more labor and cost-intensive. Enhanced state and federal regulations, a less healthy population both, both physically and mentally, and an increased propensity for inmate officer physical engagement have led to more challenging and dangerous working environment. COVID outbreaks have been an ongoing occurrence in the institution. Among other issues, including shift coverage and sick leave, this has led to a disruption in the central booking program. Its closure impacts all law enforcement departments in the county whereby the direct and negative impact to all citizens of the county is in taking a police officer literally off of the street as they spend hours processing a detainee. There are also increased overtime costs to those individual law enforcement agencies. Due to this increasingly unstable working environment, the state of Maryland and correctional facilities in our region have increased their hiring incentives and recruitment approach. For example, the state of Maryland recently announced a $5,000 new hire bonus, an increase in salaries and a $2,500 regional hiring bonus. Regarding 911 specialists, the Department of Emergency Services is experiencing major difficulties in attracting and retaining 911 specialists. 911 specialists or communication specialists are responsible for screening, for screening inbound 911 calls to determine disposition, dispatching fire and EMS calls for service along with transferring law enforcement calls to the appropriate agency on a 24/7/365 basis. The career is considered to be one of the most stressful in the United States. What the Department of Emergency Services is experiencing as a small 911 center is the same that other centers are experiencing across the country. A high turnover rate and the length of constant on-the-job training, up to 10 months before they're cut loose, is the same that other centers are experiencing across the country. A high turnover rate and the length of constant on-job training, I apologize for reading that twice, but it's very important that you get, that you get it two times. The county is, is also at a disadvantage in attracting applicants because of the starting salary being lower than surrounding agencies targeting the same applicant pool. Also is the overtime cost is very significant. As we have previously advised, county administration is in the process of conducting a comprehensive salary survey, the completion of which is due by December of this year. Upon receiving the results of the study, an evaluation will be conducted to determine its most effective, economically efficient and expedient implementation across all county departments included in the study. Until such time, as stated, time-critical, public safety issues in corrections and 911 specialist, communication specialist departments require addressing. According to this resolution request is a measure to address these concerns. Funding for this request has been identified through the American Rescue Plan and based upon the most current guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department, the use in this manner qualifies. Very important, we continue to research and evaluate the most efficient and permitted use of this funding source as well as our ability to extend ARP funding to additional departments, but we have not received guidance which confirms that a wider application would be permitted and we continue to seek such guidance. I recommend for your approval that these non-recurring costs be implemented to address this public safety issue. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I've not, I guess we've not had anything come in front of the council in a long time that's probably generated more phone calls to me from other county employees that are not happy about this. They seem to think it's very unfair. I understand these folks are very important to us and what they do are very important to us. I'm just wondering if the $1,500 bonus and then another $1,500 later is going to be enough to keep these people employed if, as you say, the state's offering larger bonuses and such? And the morale, is it worth, what's cost, going to cost us in morale with other employees in the county? You're talking about December for this, for the salary study, we're only talking three months off and the possibility of trying to get these salaries up for everybody in Wycomico County. You're talking $520,000 here that we're going to hand out to a very small number of employees and, and I'm not discounting their importance, believe me, but I'm also looking at all the other people in this county that had to work during the pandemic, they did all the things that they were required to do and I wish our HR director was here tonight, I had some questions for, you know, a lot of the other departments are down in employees also, so this is, I think this, this could cost us a lot more in the long run by not spreading this $520,000 out among other employees, so.
Just maybe what Joe's.
Ms. Cannon?
What Joe's trying to get at is what do you see that the correctional officers and the 911 specialists, what was their role that was so much different and set them so far apart from the other county employees?
They were working 24 hours a day, in close contact, could not be away from other employees, inmates. The 911 facility is a, is a room, it is not, they did not have separate offices, they, they're, before we had the, even the opportunity for vaccines, they had to be there. And you, the correctional officers had to interact with the inmates. There, there was no way of avoiding that in those jobs.
We, we appreciate every employee, trust me, I appreciate every single employee in the county system. They come to work, they, they ask nothing, they, they do so with less than competitive salaries, as we mentioned in the vacation buyback, they come to work when, when they're losing time. The, the issue is, we're addressing what we can address with the American Rescue Plan money, the way the guidance tells us we can do it. So therefore, we're, we're, we're taking our frontline public safety employees and we're trying to retain them and recruit them to stay here so that they remain frontline employees, that when someone calls 911, there is an experienced individual on the other side of the line. When there is an issue in corrections, that there's a qualified individual that's there to handle that situation, as the warden can attest to, I'm, I'm telling you, the warden, I can bring her up here and she will let you know exactly what the correctional officer goes through. That does not mean that there are other employees, there are other departments in this county that haven't sacrificed their, their time, haven't sacrificed their family, their lives in coming here every day. We get it, we're trying to help the, where we can right now, we're going to address those other departments as we can. And to, to the salary survey, not till December, that's kind of why in my statement I said that we're going to take a look at the salary survey and try and implement what we can, where we can and when we can and possibly use the American Rescue Plan should we get the guidance that allows us to do that.
Well, I, I understand the dangers these folks go through and the correctional officers having to deal with prisoners. The state's attorney's office has to deal with them, sheriff's department has to deal with them. You know, they're, they're in contact with these people too and if you're talking about whether they're dangerous or whether they're just breathing on you, you know, that's, that's the same thing. I mean, I'm not saying these people don't deserve it, believe me, but I'm also saying that, you know, our county roads employees, they came to work, they were in contact with other employees, our general services people were in this building handling trash and handling stuff that other people had handled. There was a myriad of dangers across anything that anybody was doing. I understand what you're trying to do and I, I understand the importance, but I think we can find, if we had to increase this number, this 520, I don't know, you say it's coming from the American Rescue Plan, is that where this money's coming from?
Yes.
If we had to increase it and spread it out amongst our other employees, you know, I guess another question, is this include the supervisors? Do the supervisors be getting this bonus also?
So it is for the.
Right to the top, right to the department head?
It, it does not include the department head.
Uh huh.
It includes every other employee in the corrections department that is a, is a certified or can be certified correctional officer and it is only the 911 specialists and the communication specialists in the sheriff's department. And so it does, so if you are a, but it's all ranks of the 911 specialists, so if you are a supervisor in the 911, yes, you will get it, but the, the director of emergency services will not. The sheriff will not.
A quick, can I make a quick comment?
Mr. McCain?
Actually, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Basota, because I thought that was very well said in terms of, and I think all of us highly value the employees of Wycomico County, I mean, their commitment to their jobs, it's, you know, it's tough jobs, you know, a lot of them have to do and, and that's all going to be looked at, you know, we have a salary study coming up and, but I get it, I mean, this is an immediate need. Funding is provided for this immediate need through the American Rescue Plan, you know, and in the day, I mean, this pie's got to be, you know, like it or not, I mean, it can only be divvied up in pieces at a time and, you know, this is, at the moment, just, you know, somewhat of a crisis situation we're facing and, you know, trying to do something to improve this situation, I certainly very much support this, particularly as opposed to not doing anything, I mean, I don't think that's, I mean, that's certainly not going to improve morale and so forth, so, I mean, I, I commend you for what you're doing.
Again, just so we're clear, thank you very much for your comments, Councilman Hollis. What we're, what we're saying is we are addressing the other employees, it's just we can only do what we can do with the American Rescue Plan, that doesn't mean that we can't use other sources, reserves or savings in salaries, but we're looking that, we're looking at that in addition to the salary survey, so we're looking at, at a whole host of things. We can use this American Rescue Plan now to take care of two critical areas for public safety and we're allowed to do it.
Is, is the $520,000 all that's available from the American Rescue Plan at this time?
No, it's not. We could use the 10, whatever the, the, the report that we just gave you minus that, minus what we budgeted for, but again, $20 million, over a $164 million budget, general fund budget only goes so far. So we need to be extremely cautious in, in, in how we do use it and how we're allowed to use it.
I think you don't want to miss, you don't want to miss the one point. It says the American Rescue Plan allows for premium pay for eligible workers. They aren't defining the eligible workers, the American Rescue Plan is defining the eligible workers and that's what this is being.
And that's why. So is there any other departments that are eligible workers? So be, an eligible worker is someone who came to work when others were able to work for them.
That's why I, why I stated in the last meeting, we are being, the guidance keeps changing on us. I, I feel very comfortable that these departments, the guidance is not going to change, that we can use the American Rescue funding for these employees. At this moment, they came to the office and we met with the directors of these departments and heard their issues. We understand there are other issues in other departments. I am continually doing research and on the American Rescue as to, because again, meeting with Erica Joseph and meeting, you know, we, we've had other people approach us, we are looking at all of those possibilities, but back to your question, Councilman Cannon, what is the most important thing we feel right now is to try to stabilize these positions so that the employees that we currently have don't want to go anywhere else, don't want to lose their longevity with our retirement system, aren't ready to, don't want to lose their longevity with us, we can. longevity with us. We can use these funds now to help meet that.
Is there another, is there a list of the eligibility for this Rescue Plan money? Is there a list?
The guidance is still interim.
So you don't know what the guidance is?
I, as I stated, the guidance, the guidance that I have, we have received, I feel these will not change.
So I understand that. But public safety is one of them, you would say, right?
Yes.
So our roads is public safety. I mean, stop signs get knocked down.
Absolutely.
Somebody has to run out and put up a stop sign. You know, we have a washout. So I'm trying to get it, what else is eligible?
That's what I'm continuing to research. I am comfortable with what I've placed in front of you at this moment. Doesn't mean that at the next meeting or two meetings from now, that I won't be able to come back to you and say, I'm comfortable with additional employees, additional departments. This is what I feel qualifies at this moment that won't cause us any issues when, and I'm not saying if, but when we're audited on the use of these funds.
I appreciate your explanation. I was trying to follow along, and I heard Councilwoman Ackley ask a question, and I think Councilman Holloway asked the same question, but I don't know if you answered it. Is there a list that shows who is eligible, other than these? Are there anybody else that's in a list or on a list that's eligible? Are they the only ones?
What I'm saying is, is the guidance is still interim, and so I can't give you a definitive list at this moment.
But I want to.
Then we should probably hold off until we get a definitive list.
Well, but that's what I'm saying is, is if we hold off, we're postponing the critical issue that we have right now.
Absolutely.
And if we, as I have said, I feel comfortable that these meet the requirements. Does that, again, as I just stated, I feel that as we continue to get guidance, that there could be other areas. But I don't want to put this county at risk of having to return these funds for an ineligible use.
If we didn't have the American Rescue Plan money coming in, we'd have to be paying it ourselves, correct?
We should be.
Do you mean, as I said before?
Out of our own budget.
Salary savings or reserves, absolutely. Yeah, that's something the administration absolutely would look at.
So if we didn't have that, we'd have to be paying it ourselves anyway.
We're not saying that. We're not coming back to do that. We're trying to take care of these two departments. We're looking at the other departments as a whole, and what funds we can use to do that with.
Miss Long, can you get us a copy of the documents that supported these specific departments being qualified?
Positions.
Positions.
I can get you the section that I read, yes.
I think that would be helpful.
If I understand this correctly, to clarify Councilman Ackley's point, there's not going to be guidance that says 911 specialists, 911 callers, correctional officers, police department people, they get it, and roads don't. It's an interpretive guidance, and there's no guarantee that in a month or six months from now, we're going to have anything more clear than we have now. So therefore, we may have to make a decision as to what that guidance tells us.
So I guess my thought is, is this, is it saying anyone who reported to work during the pandemic? Is my interpretation of it and what I've heard from other counties, but if you're saying you just think it's this specific job?
I'm not saying that I think it's just this specific, but I am, I, I don't know how else to state it. So I feel like I'm repeating myself.
I think, I think you said it.
I think what you're saying is that this is a first step.
Yes.
And this is the first step that we feel safe and secure with.
Yes.
And there's no doubt that more steps will follow in the future, but for right now, we don't want, we don't have a crystal ball. But this is the one step we know is secure and safe.
That we believe is secure and safe, yes.
And I think the council agrees with that 100%, but we don't want you to stop there.
But I'm not saying that we are stopping there.
We haven't said that at all. If that's an interpretation that you've gotten from this counter, we apologize for it, because that is not true.
We're hoping that you're going to move forward with your word. So I think you did a.
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry.
I said, I hope you go through with your word as far as helping the rest of the county employees.
I usually do. Okay.
I'll keep you down that. I'll stick with that. You did a good presentation, and I wrote a number down, but I wasn't sure exactly what you were talking about. You said 27 positions. I think you were talking about corrections. What was that?
27 positions open in corrections, which is the number one, unless the sheriff's department has more, Lieutenant?
Well, last meeting, there was 12, according to the sheriff. I don't know.
It's 27 as of Friday.
How many?
27 as of Friday in corrections.
In corrections. What about the sheriff's office?
I do not know.
How long has those positions been open, though, in corrections?
I do not know.
I mean.
The warden?
I mean, I know for the past few years, every time we look at, you know, go through the budget, there's, they're never fully staffed. I've never seen them fully staffed. I can't remember them ever being fully staffed.
I can't tell you, other than there's 20, my understanding is 27 open positions.
And the email that I sent to Laura last week, we had five that just recently resigned.
Well, county roads has lost 10.
We need to fund, we need to get more money to these individuals, above all else. I think that's the one thing that I'm hearing, is that the county wants to see, the council wants to see more funds to the folks who need it. You guys are already doing that with a study of salary survey. You, this specific comment, this specific section is regard to ARPA. You are doing your darndest to be as, to stay as close to the letter of law and what is available with federal guidance, which by the way, federal government, you know, they're not exactly known for their leadership these days. So I'm glad, I'm glad you are taking a step to try to take care of our important, the folks that are really, you know, on the front lines here. And I guarantee, just from listening to this, it sounds like you're already have in mind other ways that you can hopefully make this work with other positions. So I just want to go out of my way to commend you for doing this. This is, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. I'm sorry, you have to feel like you're getting a beating or a lot of questions on this. But you're doing a good, a very good thing in the sense of trying to get funds to the folks who need it the most. And I hope we come out of this with a better understanding with the salary survey, so that we can know going forward where we should be and how we can be very competitive. This is only a short period of time that we have these funds for ARPA, or, you know, who knows how things go forward. But this is a positive thing, and I'm very happy that you put this forward. And I hope we can see this to more folks. And I don't think we have a better person in charge other than the panel and being here to be able to go through the guidance, which is very limited and very sketchy and constantly changing on the hour. So thank you.
But back to my question about the 27 positions. Ironically, I went to the Civic Center yesterday to drop off some recyclables, and I saw on that nice billboard we just bought and put up there, there's an advertisement, Maryland Correctional, or Maryland Corrections, your new correctional officer career is calling, and it has the Maryland State website. But I waited and looked at the rest of the advertisements, I didn't see anything about Wycomico County Department of Corrections. I'm wondering why we're putting state advertisement up there for employees, but nothing about the county.
So we're advertising for state employees at our county?
On that big billboard.
I wonder we're not winning.
I thought that was odd, and ironically, we're talking about it today. What's the, how do you explain that?
I mean, the board is a, is a advertisement tool that our sponsors at the Civic Center are allowed to utilize. And they pay for the right for that sponsorship. We put county stuff up there. We can look into putting up our county, we put up the county job fair. I know that was advertised.
And I think I saw that. But my point is, if we need 27 corrections officers, it'd be nice to see that advertisement up there as well. We own that board.
Can we have another work session on this? And Pam, I think what I'd like to see, I know we're down a lot of employees. In fact, I, so like I said before, I was hoping the HR director would be here. Find out what kind of monies we have left over in salaries that we've not been paying, because we are down those employees. And if nothing else, add to this.
I will tell you, I did an analysis on our overtime, and our salary savings is being eaten up by the fact that we're having to pay overtime to our, the, and that is adding to the woes, because people feel they can't, they can't even just work a normal week. They have to, we have, we have shifts that have to be filled.
This is relief to two critical areas in public safety. To that point, we're on a trajectory to double the overtime rate in corrections.
But this isn't going to solve the overtime problem, because you're not hiring new people with this money. You're giving it to the people that's already there.
There's a retaining and recruitment angle for this.
Because again, the second payment happens for anybody who gets recruited between now and December 31st. So there is a recruitment aspect to this.
Excuse me. Okay, thanks for correcting me on that. But the first 15, the first 1,500 is.
The first 1,500 is retaining the employees that we have, so that they don't try to take the, they don't try to go somewhere else. And so they maintain their longevity with us, and we keep well-qualified employees that we currently have. My personal fear is postponing this, another work session means that we're postponing this and telling the employees that, you know, just keep waiting. We might do this.
Question on procedure now. Where will this go, Mrs. Hurley? Will this go as a legislative bill? Will this go as a resolution?
A resolution, isn't it?
Resolution.
Okay, it'd be a resolution. And I would like to see it as a resolution at the next meeting. In the next meeting, we'll certainly have a discussion on that as well. So I think that should suffice.
On the resolution, we'd get the opportunity to vote on it.
Well, we'd also have discussion too.
Right.
We can have all the discussion we want.
Yes, it would be a budget amendment as a resolution.
As a resolution.
Be okay, Joe?
Yeah, sounds good.
I would agree with that. I mean, we can still discuss it, so.
Mr. Davis?
I'm going to get the information that he wants.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yeah, if you get them.
Are you putting it on the?
For a resolution at the next meeting. I mean, we still are going to have the opportunity to have a discussion and vote on it. And I think you'll be bringing us more information.
At this point in time, this is the information that I've got, but I will.
It's going to change.
Well, I'm hoping it's not, I'm hoping with the fact that council's willing to move this forward to a resolution, it won't, we won't change our numbers, that we will still have the same number of employees.
But the guidance may change. You also stressed the guidance may change.
Guidance may change, yes.
And some of us want to see that list of eligible.
That's one question that's never been answered tonight. I mean, are we going to see, see the guidance? Is the council going to see the guidance of?
I can, I can send you the interim guidance that I have. It's also this thick, it's legalese, and I will gladly send you what I've gotten. But it's, it's still interim. And again, I, I feel it is my responsibility to be as conservative and fiscally responsible, so that we don't get any of us to have to turn around and return this money.
Mr. Pesota, would you be willing to look at any other departments that have worked through the pandemic and add it to this at this time?
I'm sorry, where, we've already addressed all of this. We're looking at these two departments. We're looking at the other departments as we can use the American Rescue Plan funding for. As I said in my statement, we are also looking at other ways to address that.
So is that a yes or no, for right now?
Yes.
You would be willing to?
She would like us to add other employees to this legislation right now, or this resolution right now.
That contradicts everything we've been talking about, using the guidance. It would be contradicting the guidance.
Okay, so the answer's no.
The answer's no.
I just wanted a yes, no. That's good.
Well, yes, you're saying you're looking for other departments. No, not for this particular situation.
We would like this resolution to be this resolution.
But you have within your intent to continue to go back as guidance, which by the way, federal government guidance is not exactly clear, steady, or on time. So you'll be getting that guidance. And in due time, we will review that and find something from that.
And as a CPA, she's advising that this is the best course of action. She has a license and a canon of ethics, and quite frankly, we all do as employees, to make sure that this is done as fiduciarily responsible as possible to, for the taxpayer. Just because it is $20 million in federal money, doesn't mean it's not our tax, our tax dollars. We want to make sure that we use this the best way possible. We're looking at these, these two departments, or three departments, to make sure that we address these systemic issues now. And we're looking at the other employees and departments in the salary survey, possible use of American Rescue Plan money, as well as reserves and salary savings in each department.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we move forward, please.
Yes.
I'd also like to ask that we, if we could, with counsel's permission, to cancel the update on county council goals. We have two guests that have been here for three hours.
Right, we're behind, thank you.
I'd like to move into a little session.
And I don't want to hold you all up. You did a great presentation. I know there's some answers or questions that need to be answered, but I want a consensus. Mr. Cannon, moving forward with a resolution?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen, Ms. Ackley?
No, not until we get more information.
Ms., Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
If they're going to bring any information in the next meeting, we'll be fine.
She said she doesn't have any more.
Well, she said she was going to send us.
She said she can give us the guidance.
The guidance.
Interim guidance.
So is that a yes or a no?
You hear what I said?
No, I didn't. You got your mask on.
I said if they would give her the information that she asking for.
I'm assuming you'll get some information. Mr. Holloway?
I'm doing the other information.
All right. And I'll vote yes, saying that we will see information at the next meeting. Thank you very much. And next on the agenda, we're going to move to personnel matter with the Wycomico County State's Attorney's Office. Thank you all.
Yeah, really, I missed that one.
Are you ready?
No.
I think he is.
Is it?
Oh, okay.
You are ready. All right. This was initially supposed to be a closed work session, but our guidance said it has to be open, so here we are.
So thank you for seeing to it that I was on the agenda. This meeting has been a tough act to follow, so I will try to keep it brief. I'm making requests in salary budget amendments for a lot of the reasons that have been stated already tonight. I only, just before four o'clock today, received notice that it wouldn't be in closed session. So I've tried to amend my comments to, so that I'm not divulging any private information regarding my employees. I believe we'll be able to address three of my items tonight, and then two more, I'll need some more time to figure out how to make it an open session or how to make them in closed session. So we are all, what is clear from tonight's meeting, if never before, is that there are unprecedented challenges, largely because of COVID, that we're all trying to get through. Those challenges specifically from my office have affected our ability to resolve cases, because we can't try jury trials, because juries only recently started being heard again, because we couldn't be in close proximity to one another. My prosecutor's caseloads are more than double what they were under normal times. I have some prosecutors with 150 cases, trying to remember the facts of in normal times, 70 cases. But let alone now, 150 is becoming unworkable. And crime continues, and it's not slowing down. Today, I assigned 21 felony cases that came in just Thursday and Friday of last week. Thursday and Friday, we received 21 felony cases. Five of those, they were all investigated and charged by the police. Five of those were felony burglaries. Two of those were home invasion. Eight assault in the first degrees, some of those with firearms. Most of those were domestic violence. Six felony. Six felony CDS cases that bring guns with them into our community. And we are now, it is not infrequent that we are seeing methamphetamine on our streets. It's dangerous unlike any other drug that we've seen in our community. You may recall that the home in which Corporal Heacock was killed, brutally murdered, was a mess house just over our line, less than probably a quarter mile as the crow flies. And two of those were firearms cases. Some of my prosecutors are being scheduled for nine jury trials a week. They must be prepared for every one of those, not knowing which will go to trial and which won't. They work nights, weekends, all without complaint. Every one of them, and they do it because they know it's what needs to be done to protect the public safety. That means administratively prepared, that means subpoenaing witnesses, answering discovery, talking with witnesses, civilian and law enforcement, and that means substantively being prepared, knowing the rules of evidence that apply in the case, what evidence is going to be admissible, and then developing trial strategies. Investigators, victim witness, prosecutors, and support staff are working incredible hours to make that all happen. Only investigators get overtime and it is only, it is not even one and a half. If they're not preparing cases for trial, they are reviewing search warrants. Our search warrant numbers, we reviewed and were executed in this county 30% more during 2020 than 2019. 713 search warrants, that includes a couple wiretaps that were executed. That means they were all reviewed by a prosecutor in my office. For the past nearly four years since I've been in office, we have done more with less, and I'm incredibly proud of the staff that we have. But I can only expect so much of them. The citizens and you can only expect so much of them. I put the quality of the service that we provide this community and our productivity against any office in this state. We are at a tipping point, and I need your help. The quality of our staff matters. There seems to be a mentality that we are doing staff a favor by giving them a job. That is not how it is. Things have shifted. Our economy has shifted. Departments across this county are losing people to the private sector, to state jobs, and to other counties. We should all be grateful for every staff member that we have that's willing to do this business with us. Because it requires more of people than any of us should expect also. And if we don't have people that care about their job, the quality with which they approach their work every day, we ain't got nothing, nothing. Training costs. There are jobs in this county that the training costs are higher. They are higher than most others, right? If those people aren't executing their jobs with experience, with care and with respect and dignity for our populace, nobody in this room would appreciate calling 911 and getting somebody that doesn't know how to do their job. A reflection of our society is how we treat the most vulnerable among us. People at the jail are vulnerable, right? They are vulnerable. If we can't get quality COs, and I, like, I, this is not what I intended to do, but this meeting is. I'm just surprised. I'm, with everything that happened in the legislature this past session, I contemplate what our community looks like in three or five years. Three or five years, if we can't get police officers on the street that are quality police officers. I mean, I worry about roads too. I, I, I'm only speaking about, right, the, 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 the other departments, the offices, the sheriff's office, my office, that I have the most contact and experience with, right? So I mean no disrespect to any other department, and I don't think any, anybody else does If we have to lower our standards to make hires, nobody's going to like the result of that. Not one person is going to like the result of. All the departments across the country that have done that, police departments, rife for corruption, right? If you're not requiring a polygraph test of someone, if you're not requiring drug testing, none of us wants to be there.
Madam State's Attorney, what you are requesting is just a reallocation.
So I, I'm requesting of you, the main one is a reallocation of funding that is already within my budget. I've anonymized my request.
Okay. We do, this is.
I think we had that. Yeah, we have that.
With 16,000.
Yeah.
Reallocation 16,000, right?
Yes.
From available salary, already budgeted, correct?
Yes.
So it's just a transfer.
So I've, I've identified the 16,000 that is available within my salary budget and then allocated that against five increases. Three are increases for people doing paralegal work, and the other two are for victim witness coordinator.
Okay, so that's a very small ask. And I'm assuming that also in the next fiscal year, when budget time comes around, at that point in time, you will adjust those numbers to reflect what the salaries may, may be on a more permanent basis?
Yes.
Yeah, 16,000 is such a minimal ask. I, I understand that it's required to come before the council, but it's a no brainer. It's a, it's a very minimal ask.
Is that all you're asking for?
So it's, that is the only monetary ask that I feel that I can make in open session. So I will consider what Mr. Mitchell has provided in terms of what is permitted in open session, and I will try to meld that with the bill 2020-09 and, and, and see where we, but I need some time to do that, more than two hours before the meeting.
Yeah.
And not, not to beat a dead horse, but I think eventually, this is certainly an area that the acting county executive and the finance director would certainly need to review in the second or third phase of the funding that's coming from the government, from the recovery money, as considered essential employees as well. I would think that this is going to fall in line with whatever the parameters might be at some point in time. But again, none of us has a crystal ball, but I would think that might be a priority.
The other request, and I, I'm not clear precisely why it's before you, but I need, so the retitling of a position, position number.
Assistant State's Attorney.
Yes, indulgence.
Aren't you at risk also of violating speedy trial?
Oh, that's it. We're, we are arguing speedy trial motions as we speak.
Right.
I mean, but we're all, you know, the, the courts and we're all doing sort of the best that we can do at, at the moment. But it is, we will have to argue those cases. I, I see no concern. I see no dismissal or, I don't see that as an issue, but it's something we'll have to argue.
And if your staff members aren't doing eight cases a day individually, if they say we can only do six, that's going to be two people that, two individuals that are going to be back out on the streets.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Potentially. It's, there are real public safety risks.
Sure.
And you only have to ask or know one victim of violent crime to know that, so, but, and I pray you don't, but.
Your retitling position is number two, sorry.
Yes, I'm just.
What's the impetus to that? This is my question.
Is that I am hiring, I'm not in a position to name a deputy state's attorney at this time, but I do, I have identified a hire for, that has that level of experience that can be an asset at that salary. So I don't believe that the retitling needs to, well, I don't purport to practice this type of law that governs you all, but it's, it's a simple retitling. I would request that, that, I'm, I don't quite understand why that's, doesn't, I, I don't, not sure, but I, I'd like to make that change forthwith. I had intended to ask for the approval of a new position, which I know off budget year is not, you know, something that normally happens, but a victim witness coordinator is, we are in need now of a victim witness coordinator, an additional victim witness coordinator in our circuit court to make contact with victims and witnesses, help, help prosecutors prepare for trial in their cases, have done the legwork. It is a cost effective way to increase the number of cases that prosecutors can handle if they don't have to be that frontline contact with victims and witnesses. I'm proposing the salary be $34,650. I've identified a candidate for that position if, so I, that's my request.
Is that full time position?
So it's a 32-hour-a-week position.
With benefits?
No benefits. She does not need health benefits.
Ms. Hurley, that number two, the retitling, is it in front of us because of the budget, the classification of positions for the budget?
Yeah, so council approves the paying classification plan. That's actually an exhibit to our budget bill each year.
Okay.
And all of these, the three issues she's got to address are in that paying classification plan, so that's why it would need council's approval to amend it.
All right. So what's the bottom line that you're asking? I heard of the 30-some thousand and the 16,000.
For the, the 16,000 is already within the budget, so it's a net zero for the council. The retitling and then the 34,650 for the victim witness court.
How much is that retitling going to cost?
Nothing.
That, so what you're asking is the position?
Yes.
I'm okay with all three. You're in a, you're.
You had a question.
Heck of a position, and, and it's not of your own doing.
And it's, none of, none of our doing, it's just we're all trying to do the best we, we can with the hand we've been dealt, and there are real world consequences.
I think Ms. Ackley had a question or comment.
Jamie, how much is this? Are you seeing any retrials from the Salisbury Police Department?
So they've not made it all through the pipeline yet.
But they're, that's still coming.
They're still coming, and I'll be able to share more, I anticipate, the next time we meet, but.
Good question.
But, yes, it's, the, notably of the 21 cases that were charged just in the last two days, in Thursday and Friday of last week, 12 of those were from the Salisbury Police Department. It is proportionately a, you know, it, it, there are challenges that we have.
Are you talking about the evidence room?
No, I'm just talking about the new criminal case.
I thought it was from the evidence room.
Is that what your question was?
It was from the evidence room.
Her question was about the evidence room.
Yeah, so we don't have numbers on that yet. It's just still working through.
Working through the system.
Ms. Hurley, do we bring those back as three separate resolutions at the next meeting? Do they have to be resolutions or are we able to vote because we're in an open session? Or, I mean, help us out.
It would have to come back for formal approval. My suggestion would be just to amend that exhibit attached to the budget bill unless.
Will it have to be a resolution? So it will have to be. So the question was, does it have to be three separate?
It's, it's.
Probably safe.
The advantages to three separate is that if any council member has concerns about one, it doesn't end all of them. But if you do one, then it accomplishes it all in one, but it's amending the same exhibit for three separate things.
Right. Josh, how do you feel? Nicole? Bill?
Bring it back as three separate amendments, it should be pretty quick.
Three separate amendment? Okay, you have a consensus. Bring it back as three separate amendments. I guess, Ms. Hurley, you can have a word with that.
I'd like to say something, Bernie.
Yeah, Mr. Holloway has a comment before we finish.
You know, I heard your speech before you got into the details. You know, I wasn't trying to put a squash on what the county executive was doing for people. I was trying to get something done for the rest of the county, because I'm going to tell you, and John's sitting there, I got lots of phone calls from other county employees. There's a lot of county employees that's not happy about this when they say, we're coming to work too. And I understand all your, what you said, John.
I get, I get the cause too.
You know, and if there's any way.
I have the same sentiment, absolutely. I appreciate everyone.
If there's any way between now and the next meeting that we can do something for the rest of the county employees, I think it would make things a lot better because you're really going to hurt morale in this county when this, if this goes the way it's been brought to us, I'll put it that way. Okay.
All right, thank you, Jim. Anything else?
No, I, I, no.
We'll see you at the next meeting then.
Relax.
Thank you. You'll be fine.
Jamie, take, take the week off.
Yeah.
You had yesterday off, didn't you?
Yesterday, uh, yesterday, I was busy doing homework yesterday.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Summer work.
Summer work, yes. Listen, we were doing yesterday. Warm bath work.
It's you.
Evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Sorry it took so long. Trying to rush for my loan. So if you would, introduce yourself and then tell us what you're here for.
Captain Richard Weersberg from the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Is that a promotion?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It depends how tonight goes. It's been the. I'll be as brief as possible and give you as many details I can, and hopefully we can go forward quickly. The sheriff and the chief deputy sheriff, Louis, and the chief deputy Baker met with the county executive approximately a week or so ago, maybe two weeks ago. With, we would like to go forward with a one-time $1,500 signing bonus to lateral hires. I have the numbers here if we want to go in more detail, but we currently have three lateral hires that we are looking at that would save us quite a bit of money and help, as you all know, our empty, our open positions is that.
Did you figure out how many openings you have?
Currently, we have seven openings. I have six recruits in the academy. If you do not know, we hire a new recruit, not including the background part. The academy itself is six months long, and then we require our deputies do, to do 400 hours of FTO training. The state only requires 250, but we find that we get a much better product if we do a total of 400. Basically what we do, we have them do three rotations on each shift. We have a rotating shift. The reason we're asking for this $1,500, one, we feel these are great candidates. So far, where they are in the background stage, they are not completed as of yet, but the total savings to the, I can just give you some quick numbers. To send a new recruit to the local academy is 4,100, or $4,171. And then by the bonus for, the total for that, for three recruits would be $12,513. And then by the bonus for the total for that, for three recruits, would be $12,513. To hire these three re these three laterals would be a total cost of $4,500. So the savings right there. Not counting the FTO time of 400 hours, which is approximately $8,828 in salary, a lateral only has to do 80 hours, which would be $1,889. And that is the quick ballpark since we've been here a long time. I'll be more than happy to dive into more detail for the questions.
One real quick question is.
Go ahead.
So is this additional monies to the?
No, sir, we would take this out of our existing salary.
So you have, so it's out of your, you're just moving, you're moving monies that's already in your.
It's in our salary account. We would just like to do this to help. As you know, several agencies in the area have LEOPS. The, for example, I talked to my counterpart SPD, they offer a $10,000 signing bonus for a lateral. We require our laterals to have at least a minimum of two years' experience to qualify for DFC. If they don't, they start as a deputy. So we would bring our, we bring our laterals in as a DFC base.
It would be crafted just like the $150 language, and that language had no additional financial impact. It was just getting the authorization to be allowed to do it.
Okay with it.
So I do have a question. Ms. Harley, the previous memorandum said the county acting county executive did not object to the previous memorandum, but this one, it doesn't say anything from the sheriff.
Ask him, he's sitting right there.
I know, that's why I'm asking. You don't object, okay, because it's it's written on the previous memorandum, so I want to make sure.
So this isn't going to cost us any money?
It's just coming out of our salary budget.
Okay.
It will in the future, though.
And it saves.
Well, right, we just.
It saves the taxpayer a lot.
I I understand that, and some of us up we're up here talking earlier that we want to make sure we're fair to all the employees, and we have to start somewhere, so.
Now, just to, we are looking for looking at our coming year's budgets to offer signing bonuses. Salisbury City, for example, also offers bachelors, if you have a bachelor's degree, they offer.
And I would recommend bringing all that data next time.
That's what we're hoping.
Bill, any objection? Ernie?
It's not going to cost us no money.
Joe?
I'm fine.
John, I think I heard somebody on this end. You okay?
Thank you.
Okay, you got a census.
Thank you very much.
What do we need to do?
It'll come back.
It'll come back to us, and there has to be a resolution as well? Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn.
It's a motion.
Thank you all.